I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Jason's not gonna make it tonight. The four of us. Reading and approval of minutes from August 20th and the 23rd, please.
Motion to approve and suspend the reading.
Okay, motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Stern, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Thank you. Okay, approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay, motion by Pillar. That's right, we're gonna add, we're adding 12A. Danny jumped too fast, sorry. The 12A meeting time change for September 17th, please.
I will second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor of the agenda? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. 5A. 2018 Street Project Updates.
Ready?
Yes, go ahead, you're ready.
I don't intend to take much time tonight. We can certainly stay as long as we want. No payments, estimates made for contractor. We kinda went through a lot of stuff 10 to 8 days ago we were here. Couple things that we've been working on since then is the Valley Gutter. You know, I got an email from you guys today on that Valley Gutter. Looked at that about 10 days ago. John has gone out and looked at it. Would plan to do the whole thing in concrete. Which, there wasn't much crown there, so it should be fine. Kind of first step is for John to lay that out and then coordinate the removal replacement. That was about 10 days ago. These guys are doing concrete work and will be doing concrete work for quite some time here. We do have to sort out some removal and, you know, prep work with these guys because they don't have equipment here in town to do that, so. We'll have to do a little rearranging some things, but if you want that as a priority, just because it looks like heck, we can talk to these guys and see if we can get that work done sooner rather than later. That's kind of what I'm hearing, but it is, let's get it dressed, let's get it put in.
Okay.
The crane last night, we can get that pumped out. Obviously, it's an ice ore right now because the water can't get across there.
We'll get the wa- the pavement, the cement's done. But there's a huge pile of mud in the road too and, you know, just backs it up and it's washing down the street and it just looks, yeah.
Cause that's our corner, we still have a couple handicap ramps to put in and finish up there, so.
I think they're all poured now.
I think?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, that's, so there's, yeah, there's the corner right there, that's.
Okay. It's still gotta be back though, that's why the material was left there was. It was at the end of the week last week.
Okay. The question I had, and I talked to Ted about this today too, and several citizens that, is that water that's sitting there doing damage to that asphalt? And Ted said unless there's heavy traffic sitting on that, you know, it's probably just gonna leach through and evaporate and dry out.
It's mostly dry over time, like I said, we can get in there and we can try to pump that out and get it a chance to start drying. Right now, there's no traffic that's really going through there, nothing heavy that's sitting on it.
Right.
Obviously, if something gets saturated and you get something heavy on it, it's just gonna, it's got nowhere to go, so. Long term, it's not the best, you do not love water sitting on asphalt. It's kind of see the edges of Valley Gutters or anywhere where there's pouring rain, water leads to the deterioration of asphalt.
And part of my email address, that's the third time in 10 days that we've had a water like that sitting there.
I wouldn't be concerned about that, but if we're talking years of use, then we're talking, it'll fail early and right next to my house, there's water sitting, it's destroyed the asphalt over five, 10 years.
Okay.
But yeah, it's on the list. We also, we're gonna look at some concrete diamonds in the street that had to get put in around some manholes. I kinda talked to Ted here, we got prices for them to do that work. It's a little more tedious, slow work, so we're gonna have, well, we talked about that meeting 10 days ago about doing asphalt versus concrete. I think the only way to do them is in concrete, so you'll be happy with them. Otherwise, we'll get cracking and we'll get some failures after the fact, so. We plan to have them do that in concrete work as well. We didn't have a unit price for it, so we're not gonna establish a unit price throughout a change order to do that work. So Ted's got pricing on it, it's all his sub doing the work.
I sent that in August 9th.
Okay, so it's like 1300 bucks a piece or?
1320 a piece too.
PCS, do you do that?
Yeah, so.
Just a real quick question, you know, cause we do have some of the manhole covers out there that we took the concrete away from and then we brought the asphalt all the way up to them, so what would be different that would concern you with using asphalt for these? Or were you thinking the asphalt would just be to patch in there, leave the concrete in there and you patch in, or would you?
The one or two that you're talking about around on Divide, the existing asphalt was in really poor shape around that.
No question.
And we were instructed to take that out, fill it in with asphalt, and then come back later, and now we gotta cut out that asphalt and put in the concrete. So even the ones that are on that? We're gonna end up cutting them twice.
Okay, alright. I thought that was gonna be the way, I mean, it looks fine and when you drive over it, it feels fine and all that kind of stuff.
Really, it's personal preferences.
Some cities want it's concrete, some do it's asphalt.
Yep.
Well, and you know, it's like anything else, you buy a new car, then you see that car all over the place. I find myself looking at streets everywhere I go now, I was in the Twin Cities and in my parents' hometown, you know, they all look the same as what they look up here with the concrete, you know, with the squares around there and stuff like that.
Concrete is more expensive, but it is a better product. And when you get freeze thaw, you have manhole, manholes don't move, the streets move. So when the streets move, you get cracking and settlements around them, you won't get that with concrete. But they're more expensive.
So you're saying on Divide, where we have asphalt around them, we could leave that?
As long as the grade is okay. That one blends in almost perfectly. There's just a couple, we have a couple that are weird.
But like I said before, when we brought that slope from our curb up at that 2%, you know, we come up and we tie it in center, but the manholes were down lower so that now our new slope is up here, but our manhole's down here by the way. We could tie them in, but then your street rides like that on those areas, I mean, there's other ways that we could have done, we could have tore them all out ahead of time, but that wasn't how it was designed in the plans.
We only have a couple that have to be adjusted too.
Okay, so are there some that we should leave alone that have asphalt up to them that they're in good shape?
I think we only mentioned, like, talking about two or three of them.
Yeah, it's not a large number.
This isn't a large number.
It's just that when you're driving down the road now and you drive across them and you're gonna feel that bump because that existing concrete is an inch or two lower than what the slope come up to it.
We left the meeting here last time with knowing that we had to look at a few of them and we wanna do the concrete.
Okay.
So we'll process, we know unit price, so we'll process that at the next meeting with Chief Tur. But we know the quantity.
Come on, curiosity.
Yeah, no, great, I'm glad you guys asked. So Valley Gutter, diamonds, like I said, I did not have much other than just, I guess, be patient. There's, we have a lot of punchless work that is going on right now with wrapping things up, cleaning up the mess. Contractor has completion date, September 22nd. Today, they did request a time extension to complete the project. Got an email from the contractor, they requested 10 working days, which would be, this isn't a working days contract, so it's two weeks, is that what you're looking for? Okay, so September 22nd is the completion date. They requested an additional two weeks, so that would take it to approximately October 6th. For your consideration, justification they use because of all the work that was added throughout the project. Not necessarily the work over the last 20 or 21 days that led to it, but more so in the grand scheme of things.
So what would the work be in the last few days of that and where?
Well, the addition of the mainly the cement tree base, adding that work extended on the timeline of it.
I'm just curious, what is the work that is being done? You know, we're just, I don't remember the dates for August Fest, this, oh, that's this weekend. I'm just, I don't understand, so we know whether we're gonna be working over each other or interfering with.
We're not gonna slow anything down, our guys are getting here, we're trying to get this done as absolutely as fast as possible, but the bad part about where we're at right now is everything is handwork. It's all slow, tedious, you know, tying in around the edge of the curb and the sidewalks, all that. It just takes a little bit of time. We're not slowing down, we just wanna make sure that we do have our, end of our project, our date that we're shooting for, we're gonna try to get that done. The chip seal, we have until the 15th to get that done, but that chip seal's gotta sit in here for a week before we can clean the street out, before we can strike. The concrete's gotta sit in here before we can backfill, before we can seed. We've got all these guys, you know, lined up to come in here in the next two weeks to get done. We're gonna try to get it done by those timeframes, we just wanna make sure we got a little bit of a cushion there at the end.
With the amount of work that was added, I know it's been slow the last few weeks, with the amount of work that was added, I just think a two week time extension was reasonable. And what we should have done is when the work was added, when all these change orders were done, we should have granted two or three days for each one, and then that would have haunted to this night. So I guess it's up to you guys. Ultimately, if you don't grant it today, you still could have the opportunity to grant it at your next council meeting, so you could table it until then, or you could grant it now. I guess that's up for debate.
So Ted, is Mayo gonna bring any of your guys back to help with this handwork that should have been done already? Cause I, you know, PCS is saying that a lot of the handwork should have been done by your guys too.
And we're out there, we're working on it now, we're planning on bringing some more guys in next week when PCS is here because we can't really do it while they're not here.
Right, right. And the two week extension is mostly concrete work and that stuff. My question is, well, PCS, you guys left for two weeks. You know, that, they shouldn't have up and took off without.
I fully understand what you're saying, they may have to go and prioritize and clean up some of their other jobs too, just like we had to pull people periodically throughout the job to go and work on other projects too because we can't have everybody listed, I mean, we got 30 jobs on our books about a year's. I totally get what you're saying, I know that they were gone.
So, there's a bunch of concrete work left, can't do the seeding or black dirt work and seeding till that's done, so. That's where we're at.
Okay, and I don't have a huge heartburn with extending the time. We're actually back up into, you know, snowfall and, you know, any of that stuff, hopefully. But, you know, with the backfill, I've got several people who are doing their own new yards, they're tilling it. They're pulling up chunks of concrete and wood stakes and rubber gloves and garbage. Now, one guy right at the surface, looked like one little piece of concrete, he went to grab a concrete rock, well, he pulled out about a five pound chunk of concrete. The backfill is garbage and a lot of that stuff. And I'm gonna tell people if they have that garbage, tear it out and, and.
Same side, we'll figure it out. We are getting that backfill material from all of the plants out there. From the pile that's out there, so what's in that pile is, some of it is what's coming back in, so.
Is that our pile where we had, or?
Yep, top side that's out there. Some of it, we're taking out there and stockpiling and setting aside, but there is a ginormous pile of stripings from that whole area that we're bringing back in too. Not to excuse why there's a pile of lumber, you know, the garbage, but the concrete, it could be in that pile, it could be from the guys out there just not cleaning up their mess, you know. You'll see those little piles of stuff all over the place, we're picking that stuff up, trying to clean it up. They're out there with rigs and shuttles and cleaning that stuff up right now, so.
Any thoughts on the extension of the two weeks, might as well address it now and not wait while we're here. Questions, concerns? And we need to make, if we wanna do it, we need to have that motion extended to the October 6th.
Make a motion to extend it to two weeks to the October 6th timeframe.
Okay, motion by Pillar.
Second.
Second by Wolf. Discussion. So that October 6th will be the 100% completion date then?
Well, it'll be substantial completion date because there is chip seal work that has to be done in the springtime. So they'll seed and mulch everything. October 1st isn't a bad time to do seeding, assuming we have a next fall. But if we get early storm or frost or something, we might have some areas we have to address in the springtime.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Roll call.
Pillar.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Over and over. Alright, motion through.
I don't have anything specifically, I have to leave by 6:30 tonight because another account's made. So I'll sit unless you have something else for me to follow up.
One other thing, as we go and see things, as the concrete starts to settle here, or the asphalt, and if we see cracks that we think are not normal, do you want us to have Dave spray paint circle that, so then, or should we take pictures as it goes?
Okay, so.
There's some spots that we're starting to see cracking, and I don't know if that's normal or not.
It can be. We have what we would call reflective cracking, that's probably the first thing that'll happen. So if we've got a street that we milled it all the way and there was a crack there before, that probably could be, I don't know, I'd have to look at it.
It doesn't normally have a freeze thaw though, and not right now already?
It could be something else, it could be that it was overcompacted and it's failing. It could be that there's a bad substrate spot, it could be a lot of things. So I, we'd have to look at it, and we'll be here on Thursday. So yes, as things come up, please let us know.
I know that a couple spots were being on west end of Divide, where we're seeing some things.
Yeah, I seen that on the south.
On the weekend, I know.
The south half of the road.
Yeah, there's quite a few cracks actually, and they're big enough for even actually crashing.
I took Jerry, we walked down the street, and it's primarily on the south side, south half of that heading from the very west end, past the, just past the intersection heading to the east. Not so much on the north side, but as we got closer to the west end on the north side, right in front of the last sets of townhouses there, there were a few cracks in there. Not big gaps or anything, just cracks.
I'd like to look at them.
Yep. And I said to Jerry, I said, I don't know if it's an issue or not, not a road expert, but, you know, it's not something. My wife and I go for a lot of walks, and again, I started looking at all this stuff. And other places in the town, it's perfect, not a fact to be seen, so.
We'll look at it.
And I think if we see that, or we have people calling, we just need to take, and take pictures, and we need to start a file with Monte and just keep it up. Cause we have a one year.
One year correction period.
Correction period, yeah.
It's not, we call it warranty, but it's a correction period, and so if things like that come up, what we'll do is we'll do a nine month walkthrough on all the areas. It helps to have information from you guys before we do that, we can't catch everything, so that'll be helpful. And if there's things that come up right away and they wanna address them right away, they can't, they don't have to wait for that year, but see what comes up.
Any other questions or comments for Jared or even for Ted?
Just be patient through the end of construction, guys, we'll be there soon.
I have some of the ADA rats that are left to be poured, if there's a street sign here, I've requested that you put PVC down, so if somebody runs it over, I can pull that post out and put a new post in. Some of them they've done, they did one over at the hospital, I think last week, Thursday or Friday, where they concentrated the Vinsol with no PVC and the post sits off at an angle. I got nobody to straighten it, it looks bad, I mean, it's, if it gets run over, it's put a post somewhere or jackhammer it out and not put any PVC around some of them.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
But I noticed that one over the weekend, it looked kind of bad, it's concentrated in solid, they're going to be so picky.
Hi, I have a question on the monuments.
Yes.
Survey monuments, we brought this up earlier on the meeting, and like I told you guys that we were gonna look at each one, because there's like a dozen of them that had to be done, and you guys hired someone else to do that work, that work is done. I still wanna look at all of them, but the way it's looking right now is, I think a lot of them had to be done regardless, because a lot of them are in concrete. Your concrete sidewalks should not be across property lines. Your property corners should be a foot or two feet off the back of the sidewalk. There should be a grasp of their, public walkways belong on public property. So what I think we're running into is that these pins, from the ones that I've looked at, are in concrete. So if they're in concrete, they had to get set, or they had to get removed in order for the new concrete anyways. I can't say that that's all of them at the moment.
No.
Ted is making me look at all of them with him, so.
There's 10 of them on the list, and there was one that was moved because of a, they put a power pole in, they trench some line across there, it was moved because of that, there's no handicap ramp there right at the moment. But nine of the rest of them were either in old concrete or in, are in new concrete right now.
And if they were in concrete and they had to get taken off a ramp and put back in, they had to be done. So we kind of maybe prematurely said this might be a construction issue, but I guess it's good that they were done because they had to be done according to the ordinances, but I still wanna look at them, all of them, and we'll give you your final recommendation, but I don't think, I don't know that any of them were done or taken out due to carelessness or damage at the moment. But John might have a different opinion, he'll be here tomorrow soon.
Well, if you don't know that a pin's there, how do we know to not hit?
I agree.
You know, you get a little bit of dust or dirt on these things, you can't fight them. And I think there's only one that was put in, but it's put in right beside the ramp. The rest of these are all inset in concrete and were drilled right, I mean, they're so close to the back of the curb, they're actually in the yellow handicap ramp panel, they go through the panel to put them in, so.
So like I said, sidewalks do not belong, they shouldn't be crossing those, but because of the sins of whatever and where streets were built, we're not gonna move the street, you know, it's just, they're gonna cross over the property corners a little bit.
So how many were like cases where they were in the yard, where they weren't in concrete? Is there a handful of those, or?
Which one was yours, Casey's?
The street in, or down?
Sixth and Third?
Yeah.
Fifth and Third.
And like that one was, was I guess exposed prior, I mean, it was.
It's street number 2005, and that one is set in new concrete.
No, it's not, no. It's not gonna be clear.
Which one?
Cool, it's the northwest corner, it's not the southwest? See, I only have it on that here as the southwest corner, but.
Maybe you've got, I don't have one.
Do you have any thoughts on that?
My old John, I guess, you know, I guess, I stopped over too and said, no, you know, I mean, that's something of a contractor, it's.
If something goes damaged due to carelessness, it's a little ask me, I would cover it, but we have to make that determination still. I have not been able to sponsor, and I have to apologize because I didn't prepare map yet until just recently, so he's been looking at them.
I don't know if that one's on this list here.
There could also be.
Third Avenue Northwest is not on this, or this list.
Pretty much everyone on this list, we can state most of those streets.
Okay? Is that something that Mr. Link did then or didn't do? I don't know if he's mad at it, no, he didn't, no. Okay. I don't know the answer, please.
Anything else? Did Ted give you anything else for us?
Oh, you know, just getting back to the pins, I mean, if we didn't really know they're there, how do we know?
Well, but mine, no, it was exposed.
I'll go look at yours, but I'm just saying it's not here.
Shannon, Shannon did like dug it on the top side from prior.
But I mean, yeah, you can tell that it's not the one that was underground.
It was there.
Still laying there.
Yes, just a key on this, it's gonna be hit.
Well, I'm not just putting all the, we're saying, but all the ones that I've found here that are set in the concrete now, they either were in the concrete before or they're in the concrete now, we didn't know that they were there. But we'll look, we'll look at it.
Thank you guys.
Okay.
I gotta leave at 6:30, so I'm yelling people.
Good street northeast and northwest.
And then have the third avenue. Northwest on that corner.
What corner?
It's the southeast corner of that intersection.
That one's not on the map too.
But it was also not in the comment.
The ones I looked at, they, he had a map that all on there, that one was not on there, it wasn't on the list, so I'll go look at that one.
Ted, have you heard anything about the crushing plant when they plant?
They're gonna work it into their schedule, they're currently, the guys are on Jameson right now, they've got a couple other late season things that they're gonna be crushing. This was an add-on late after their schedules aren't set, but they just said, you know, before the end of.
First snowfall, yeah. You know when they're gonna come with their drone to measure those piles at all?
Uh, no, I don't.
Okay, alright, no big deal, just curious.
I can do it with mine as soon as I get it done.
Okay. Alright, 6A, Union State Bank Street closure. So Union State Bank is having a celebration, and they are doing a, it's in Payson, Stanton, and Beulah. They wanna close the street on the east side of the bank that goes from the main street corner to the alley. They've checked with the law office, it's the only other business that would be affected, they've got no issue with it. They will not be putting stakes in the new asphalt, this is one of the inspections we had. But, so they're requesting that that street be blocked out.
They're gonna paint it with Buster's paint?
They are not gonna paint anything. So they would like to close out from, they're gonna have the rental place set up a tent that morning, so they wanna close it off until the end of the business day. So it's something that we would need to approve of.
We don't stakes with the tent either?
No.
Yeah.
No.
I would make a motion to approve that request.
I'll stick to that.
Motion by Wolf, second by Pillar, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Alright, 5B and C, we have free reduced haul ranch for Lions for a fundraiser and St. Paul Church for their annual breakfasts.
I think motion to accept the pre-reduced, or offer to pre-reduce haul ranch for the two entities that you mentioned.
Okay, motion by Pillar. Second by Stern, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And we only have eight under seven for readings, but a quick question, are we getting closer to having something introduced for the ordinance for junk vehicles and?
I was still reviewing it lately.
Okay. Reports, water sewer. Finance, pressing.
Just that we have interviewed another bus driver, so that is picking up, hopefully we will have her on staff shortly.
Police, fire.
The only thing I report tonight for forestry, John is taking care of some trimming and stuff on trees to make room for impending snow season, to make sure we've got clearance for garbage trucks and plowels and all of that kind of stuff as they come over the streets. And he's also been working with citizens who have called in, needing some trimming and stuff done. So he's been taking care of the end of the season stuff and helping on Dave and folks with garbage truck.
response.
And then he's got really good plant, thirty some trees yet this, next month or mid-September, October, I think. Boulevard trees?
Sure, he's got a, he's planted, he's moved all of the ones out of the, the garden area out there and has, has those planted, so what they've been doing as of late is getting rid of their stumps from those black ash that were cut down, grinding those off and stuff like that, but I think the majority of the planting has been completed. Okay, and that's done too, this hunt for grinding.
Okay. Okay.
That's it.
Thank you, HCV. Does she have anything?
Well, I've I've got a backpack.
You got something?
I had to be careful. I didn't, I put a little flyer in here. I thought I'd just review a little bit with you in terms of some of the things in terms of where we're at. So this very first page, I know there's a couple of on the board for it, so maybe we'll, but basically what that is showing is right now in our sales tax fund, we've got like ninety-six thousand in that, and of course that's the one that Monty monitors for us all the time. Uh, and presently we have on our checkbook about fourteen thousand two ninety-two. So basically for operating, but, uh, if we needed to get our hands on some dollars, you know, we would have a hundred and ten, two ten available, it's an odd change, okay? So, uh, basically in terms of, you know, our income, our income of course comes off of, we get some, uh, four mils off GAA. We can of course get income off of, uh, our rent out at the Commerce Center. And, you know, on an annual basis right now, that's generating in the neighborhood of about sixty-two thousand, sixty-two five is what we're projected to get off of that. Uh, and then we get about, in round figures, about eleven thousand off membership. So, uh, so those are our, those are our main dollars in terms of how we generate income. In addition, of course, to the penny sales tax that you see there in terms of where that fund is at. And as you probably well know, that fund, uh, because of the requests over the cap, uh, this, just recently, we just got our first allocation in eighteen. You know, so we're about sixteen thousand dollars, um, in eighteen, so that sat, I don't know for a while. Uh, in terms of, the other thing is, is that I think it's important to note is if you wanna look at this here, uh, but this sheet, you know, we're involved, pretty heavily involved in doing the flex pace. And the way the flex pace works is this S. Interests buy down through the bank in North Dakota and us for new businesses. And you can see that what I get there is I highlighted the two eighteen, this year we're gonna pay out fourteen, six fifty-three, seventy-two in terms of flex pace. That's on, on the docket and then you see that, for instance, the volume here is, uh, a little bit less because we have one individual, one property, one business owner that their, uh, contract on a flex pace is expiring. The other thing that we do also have there is if you, uh, know it in the past, if you look at fifteen, sixteen and seventeen, you know, for the hospital project, we pledged ten thousand dollars a year uh, for that, so some of our dollars went that way. We have, uh, haven't pledged anything to the hospital this year, but I think now that, uh, we, we've seen kind of the turnaround and some of the income coming back in. Uh, we'll have it on the next docket to do something before the end of the year to maybe get. And I can't speak for the board, but I put it on the agenda and see what they would like to do if they've had, had some discussions about that in the past. Uh, our big, uh, big expenditure actually is our annual payment on our loan. We have a hundred thirty-two thousand dollar payment left on the Commerce Center out there. We'll make the annual payment of twenty-five thousand a year uh, on that, so that's the, the big expenditure and then the other large expenditure would be waiving salary that come my direction. Other than that, then, you know, we're gonna probably run at about I'm gonna say maybe around fifteen to eighteen thousand on expenditure at the Commerce Center. We did a couple of, uh, projects then that were a little bit larger than we had anticipated. One is we put in about sixty-five hundred dollars worth of flooring into the fastened out building. Uh, I find out now that we're gonna have some issues with some of the old fluorescent lights. We're gonna end up having, converting some of those now over to LEDs. So we're anticipating that, you know, there'll be some added expenditure on that side of things. And then the other, uh, item that we did out there is, uh, by request from James at J Fair. He didn't feel that the doors going into his place were as secure as they should be, so we replaced those with better quality doors. So, uh, that, uh, the cost of that material plus the labor, you know, a little bit added expenditure. Uh, this past year, we spent banking a hundred and fifty dollars on snow removal out there. So, but we're, uh, I think if we can, we get, uh, most of these larger items now, we should be, we should be good, you know. I'm, I'm concerned about maybe the lights, there's forty lights out there. And, you know, the, but the, it's foolish to put in the old valve system when for about fifty, twenty dollars more, you could put in LEDs and then you don't have to worry about.
Save money, no.
Yeah, so. And we actually had, had been working with Myron Moss as an electrical person because he seemed like he could get out there really quick while because of his, uh, he's really slowed out, so we just kind of, uh, other, well, we went back and marked, marked it, been out there originally, so. Uh, so let's see, what else can I share with you?
Buster, you guys are, are you actively looking at selling that piece of brass yet out there or no?
Oh, no, actually, we, uh, we haven't really discussed that per se.
Right.
Yeah, you know, one time we were, we were pretty, uh,
You know, some of them once, right?
And adamant about trying to sell the facility itself, the building itself. But now with the market downturn the way it is, it's pre-salt market now, so we kind of just decided to sit out for a while because, I mean, it is generate fair income for us off the rent. We still have, uh, the, the, the last tenant, which would be the family I care out there. Uh, we have about two and a half years left with him on the agreement that we entered into in terms of, uh, he's getting rented a little payment. I mean, we're waiving that because of the bill that he did resolve out of his own pockets. So when that's all said and done, if rents were to stay where they're at, which they're not because there are some escalators built in, you know, some renoals will come up, you know, and it'll be, uh, good source of income. That'll add close to maybe thirty a year for the rent. So, uh, questions and of course, in the past, quite a, quite a bit of our money went to some of the pre-development stuff on the hotel. So we're hoping that, uh, you know, we're still holding off on that and wondering where things are at, so. Questions?
Okay, thanks for the question.
Yep.
And, uh, under nine other reports, you have this, uh, street senator, Mitch Murph, Monty, well, addressed for Jason.
Jason had gotten price earlier in the year to purchase a fleet pickup for the Public Works Department. I talked to Steve today, that price is still good. We can still get the double cab under the fleet program. So the cost would be thirty thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars for two thousand nineteen, three quarter ton double cab. Long wheelbase, four wheel drive. Jason had brought it up a couple of times during the meeting and is looking for approval to purchase this, get it ordered, pay for it out of this year's budgeted funds of which we have fifty-eight thousand remaining right now. And then as soon as it's available, take delivery.
Okay. And he wanted, he, he was putting that into a, must put that into a motion, correct?
Well, he can't put it into a motion. Somebody here would have to put it in.
Right.
So is that, is that adding to the fleet or replacing something?
It would, it would probably replace the old forestry pickup. When I'm driving, it'll go down to the forestry.
Okay. What do we?
Wouldn't replace, we'd leave that for summer help, real forestry on.
Yeah.
Let them finish it off.
Let's stay in our possession and our.
Got you.
Okay. So someone would be loaded with that in motion for commissioner hack, that'd be great. If you don't feel comfortable with that, we can, we can wait. Move to purchase, uh, new, uh, new, uh, a three quarter ton, uh, double cab Chevy truck for, um, thirty thousand thirty thousand four hundred and, uh, and, uh, fifty-five dollars. Okay, we have a motion by Stern.
Second.
Second by Pillar, discussion. Roll call.
Stern.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Over and over.
Aye. Motion carried. Yeah, I know. That brings us down to new business, uh, meeting, uh, time change for September seventeenth. Nancy will not be here that evening and I'm actually at a conference in Mandan all day, so if we can move that meeting back to six o'clock, um, I can be back by six. That works for you guys?
Not me.
Remember if you case you can, Dan, remember.
Yes, no problem.
All right, then we will move that time from five thirty to six o'clock. So at the meeting, you say you'll be gone, Dan, you'll be here for that, okay. All right. Thank you. Let's take this to approval of the bills.
Craig will make a motion to approve, thank you, Bill.
All right, we have a motion by Wolf. Okay. Second by Stern. Discussion. Roll call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Over and over.
Aye. Motion carried. Meeting adjourned.